I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome here, everyone. And at this time, I would like to give the opening to Councilor Jake Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, I was reading through the book, a Steinbeck history book, of all things, Reflections of our Heritage that was printed in 1971 by Dirksen Printers. And it was Abe Borkenden had a lot of input, among others, into that book. And it's a collection of stories from our beginnings. There's a chapter on administration, and it tells many stories of different issues the community leadership had to deal with before incorporation in 1946. So here's just a few stories. From 1874 up until 1946, Steinbeck was a village district under the direction of the RM of Hanover. And it was at that time, the RM of Hanover even built their council chambers in Steinbeck. They were in council chambers, I think, until 2010. It wasn't until 1912 that the village of Steinbeck was properly surveyed, dividing it into lots and blocks and all the other land divided among the owners. And all 22 quarter sections of land were brought under the new system. It took three years of managing with the different landowners and coming to different meetings to get an agreement, as the majority of the original lot lines had all changed. In 1920, Steinbeck became an unincorporated village district within the RM of Hanover. And a three-man committee was established after the management of the new village. The very first meeting took one hour, and they appointed J.J. Reimer's secretary, and they hired him with an annual salary of $35. Troy. Opened a bank account at the Royal Bank. That means we've been dealing with the Royal Bank for well over 100 years. And directed the new secretary to buy the necessary books and stamps. The committee held regular ratepayer meetings for anyone wishing to attend and took an interest in community affairs. These ratepayer meetings were open with final decisions left to the three-person committee. Often, the contentious issues, the ratepayers also got to vote. At one ratepayer meeting, it was decided to appoint a constable at a salary of $30 per month until December 31, 1920. So he had six months of work. His duties included: keep bicycles off the sidewalks, stop ball-playing on village streets, and stop traffic from blocking the sidewalks for pedestrians, and look after general nuisance such as disturbance of the peace. Fire protection was very important, and two chemical fire engines were purchased and placed at J.R. Friesen Garage, which is today Fairway Ford, and the K.R. Barkman property, where close to where the fire hall sits today. So they put one at each end of the town or the village. A fire pump was purchased for $200 with funds from the 1921 tax levy. Total expenses for 1920 were $2,935.21. Some expenditures were $292 to dig three community wells. Chemical tanks for the fire pumps were $998. And stationary postage for the whole year was $12.75. Other interesting notes of council is setting community business hours. It was passed, and they set those hours, the six-day-per-week hours, and what the business could be open. And they also passed a bylaw forbidding obscene language on the streets. I don't know how they enforced it. And the need to build suitable accommodations for those persons that were arrested. In July of 1921, the ratepayers of Steinbeck voted 39 to 11 in favor of installing 15 electric lights on Main Street, and they were to be installed in a zigzag fashion. This was a case where the ratepayers actually got the vote at a council meeting or at a committee meeting. On December 30, 1921, meeting, a resolution passed that stated, "Whereas P.T. Barkman &amp; Sons build a flour mill in Steinbeck, and whereas in our opinion such a flour mill would be of a great service to Steinbeck and the RM of Hanover, exempting the said flour mill from all municipal taxation for a period of 10 years." There was precedent setting. At the December 15, 1923, meeting, a major controversy arose after the meeting when the community heard that the three-man committee had passed a motion to buy a village queen for $1,500 with no accompanying information. When there was a large contingent at the next meeting of ratepayers, it was brought to the attention of the ratepayers that the explanation for it was it was a power-driven fire pump that was purchased. But that's an odd name for a fire pump. In 1932, decisions were made to switch off the streetlights and reduce village staff and staff wages due to shortage of funds. This is during the Dirty 30s. Lights were turned back on in February, six months later, in 1933. But it took another two years for staff salaries to be reinstated to the previous levels. In 1943, at the July meeting, it was decided that the cowherd's men be directed to stop blowing his horn on the streets of Steinbeck, and that constable sobering confiscate the horn if the practice continued. For those of you that don't know what a cowherd's herdman is, I don't think there's any here old enough to remember that. The cowherd's would start at one end of the village, and he would blow his horn, and the cows would be released from the barns, and he would herd them down Steinbeck's main street to the community pastor, where he would take care of them all day. And then, for the evening milking, he'd have them all back to the barns. But he would blow his horn. And I guess it was annoying for some people who needed to sleep in. In 1944, a committee was formed to begin looking at the incorporation for Steinbeck as a village. And that took place officially in 1946. This represents but a few of the decisions council of 100-plus years ago had to contend with. It would be interesting to know if some of these are still on the books. While we have moved way beyond what those councils would have envisioned for Steinbeck, some of the early decisions moved our community to where we are today. To that end, it would be interesting to know how the decisions we make today might be reported at some future council meeting opening 100 years from now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Siemens. That was very interesting. Council, we have the agenda in front of us, looking for a motion to adopt. Councilor Penner, second by Councilor Swystra.
No comments.
Call for the question, all's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Okay, council, we have the minutes of March 5, 2024. The regular council meeting, they start on page one. If all had a chance to review, looking for a motion to approve. Councilor Hevert, second by Councilor Hevert. Any comments?
No comments.
Call for the question, all's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will continue to move forward. We are just a little bit after 6:35. Sorry. We're a little bit past 7:35. That's what's getting me, is the clock. It's okay. So we'll go directly into public hearing. We've got rezoning bylaw 2241. This is referring to 268 and 274 Home Street. At this time, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Borkden, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Application for rezoning bylaw 2241, respecting 268 and 274 Home Street in Steinbeck. The owner of 268 Home Street is Kingdom Home Building, Inc. And the owners of 274 Home Street are Tommy and Sandra Petkow and Bernhard and Mary Petkow. The applicant for bylaw 2241 is Kingdom Home Building, Inc. Purpose of bylaw 2241 is to propose the rezoning of the subject properties from RLD (Residential Low Density) to RMD (Residential Medium Density) to permit the development of a multifamily building across the two subject properties. Notices, as are required under the Planning Act, have been issued. There are several pieces of correspondence on the file. Firstly, correspondence received from community planning indicates no provincial concerns with the application. In addition to the original agenda package, and also a supplementary agenda package that was provided to council members in their mail bins earlier today, there are eight items of correspondence, one of which is a copy of the developer presentation for tonight, and one of which includes a petition, including the names of 43 individuals that the city has received with respect to this file. As far as the application, these properties, as I mentioned, are designated as RLD (Residential Low Density). These properties are also designated as residential under the city's official community plan. Each of these two parcels presently contains a single-family structure. This proposal would also be considered infill development and would be subject to the city's multifamily infill policy. The application also indicates the developer's intent to build a three-story structure with underground parking. Recommendation from administration is that council give this bylaw second reading, subject to any new information that may be provided at the public hearing, and also subject to the execution of a development agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Borkden. I see the applicants here today. Do you wish to speak?
Good evening, City Council, Steinbeck residents, all those watching online. My name is Luke Quebe. I'm with Kingdom Home Building. Thank you so much for having me here today and for this opportunity to speak to you. In regards to the development at Home Street, the proposed development, I have an outline of topics on next slide, please. The outline of topics tonight will be the community, infill housing, what is it? Features and benefits, site plan overview, Q&amp;As, company track record, and conclusion. I would like to start this presentation before proceeding here further and say that a little bit less than a week prior to this evening, I, well, I had a couple of weeks ago already done some walking around the neighborhood, was unsuccessful in actually speaking with residents. A little bit later, so I guess a little less than a week ago, provided an invite to about 14 or 15 residents. Basically, windshields were in their door that were not home and nearest to the properties here in question, and invited them to just a roundtable discussion at Coffee Culture two separate times listed on there with an RSVP. Unfortunately, none were able to attend. However, I was contacted by one of the people that are on the petition that invited me over to come talk with them, so that was nice. But other than that, I didn't get to speak in person with people, but I was available for that. So I'll go through the presentation now. So, yeah, next slide, community. Providing a high-quality rental experience at a variety of price points. Our vision is to create high-quality properties for those who rent by choice or necessity. With the baby boomer transition housing demand, we see a growing demand for this type of housing. This development will allow many residents of the community and surrounding area to downsize or upgrade without having to buy a home or leave the area. Next slide, please. Infill housing, what is it? It refers to the process of building housing on lots in mature, developed neighborhoods. Some benefits of infill housing include increases population in downtown core, use of existing city infrastructure, roads, sidewalk, sewer, and water, reduces expenses in the future, and maintains lower mill rates for taxpayers. This generates substantially higher property tax revenues with minimal associated costs. It also allows easy access to amenities, including groceries, banking, schools, coffee shops, restaurants, and more. As you can see by that map there, sorry if you could go back one. Subject property there is very close to all those businesses, as you can see on the map. Thank you, next slide. The location, the downtown core. Everything in red here is your central business district. Transitional zone is in pink, and our property, as you can see, is only one property between it to the transitional zone, which would allow mixed-use, commercial, and residential. This proposed location is within short walking distance, as you can see, to Bethesda, the event center, curling, hockey theater, concerts, and more, childcare, banks, and SCU, multiple restaurants, downtown businesses. Next slide. The downtown core continued. Proposed location is well within the areas of past and present infill multifamily developments. Some of them, as recent and existing in direct vicinity, include 248 Hanover, 24 units replaced old homes, 295 Lowen, which 30-plus units replaced old homes, 268 Hanover, existing multi-unit building, 321 Hanover, existing multi-unit, 245 Lowen Boulevard, and 284 Lowen Boulevard, respectively. We're in this building, we intend to build a guest suite. It's not just a maybe, that is something we want to do. It's going to have a guest suite will be available to visiting healthcare professionals. A local physician that I spoke with said that there would be a demand for this. This suite can also be booked by tenants for future, tenants for guests in the future as well. We're going to have a common amenity room for residents and guests to enjoy community within. It will include big-screen TV, billiards or other game table, kitchenette, fireplace, and furniture. We're going to do a coffee bar, something I haven't done before, but I've seen, and it appeals. Many of us recognize the importance of our motion, morning cup, even when we're pressed for time. Guests will enjoy a self-serve coffee espresso bar. It will provide high-quality coffee, latte, espresso, or tea, and it will be offered at a nonprofit pricing model as a thanks for choosing Steinbeck and our complex. We're going to, we try to always build our, or we do build our units in our buildings with high-end finishing. It does provide excellent appeal, as you can see by the 3D image of the building. Next slide. We plan on doing something we haven't personally done before. Ample parking is going to be here. By the way, bylaw requirements require 53 stalls. Yeah, and we're going to have 55. I did make a change, but apparently it didn't edit here. We'll have 55 stalls. So we'll have two more than the requirement. And underground parking and an elevator is something that, the only other building I know in Steinbeck that has that that is not designated 55-plus only would be Reimer Agency's most recent build on Penfield. So this is something that we're very excited about to provide to not only those that are seniors, but anybody else. And there's only one other building like that in Steinbeck that I know of that would have covered indoor parking. So the site plan there shows you that we're able to have a greater buffer than what the normal is. We are able to keep the hedge. That's why I actually did the 3D rendering of this hedge on the image there. There's a thick hedge along Home Street right now that we're going to be able to maintain. There is a portion of it that would have a driveway that we're going to put trees there. But we're maintaining a nice, mature hedge. There are some nice trees that we can save as well, and then we always plant more trees as well and shrubs as needed. What else about the site plan? I think that's it, next slide, please. On First Street, I developed 55 and 71 First Street, and I show you here a before image of what one of the houses looked like and an after of the, one of the buildings there. But some interesting data that I collected here, which is factual information from my tax bills, as well as the previous tax bills, which I got from your city tax clerk. The six lots producing these lots that I amalgamated at 51, 55 and 71 First produced a net annual tax revenue to the city of Steinbeck of only $7,689. That's for six homes combined. And after four multi-unit buildings spanning these properties were built, it now generates a net annual tax revenue to the city of $67,525. That's a $59,836 increase in tax revenue for the city, and that's the net. So this reflects a 778% increase in tax revenue for the city of Steinbeck while using existing infrastructure. So we believe this is an example of responsible infill development. Why is infill housing important to Steinbeck? Housing for all. Some examples are seniors, who want to remain in the neighborhood without the costs and challenges of maintaining a home and yard. Students, renting a downtown apartment allows students to the flexibility of a fixed housing budget and a proximity to services. Fixed income. Infill housing creates the opportunity to live close to work and amenities. Singles and couples provides, this provides housing at a stable budget and amount. Older, single-family dwellings in Steinbeck currently start around $200,000. Infill provides an excellent alternative in lifestyle. And for professionals, this provides a low-maintenance housing lifestyle compared to the requirements of a single-family dwelling. And this will also provide an optimum location for those employed at Bethesda. I think that's a very important note. Financial sustainability. Infill is all about options in a neighborhood and creating homes and spaces that fit diverse financial needs. Good infill development can lead to increased use of local amenities and allow city services to reach more residents at a lower cost. Building in existing neighborhoods helps save taxpayers money because additional roads, sewers, services, and infrastructure associated with building out are avoided. By densifying, we create walkable neighborhoods that reduce a resident's reliance on cars, which has a direct effect on their monthly expenses. Neighbors of infill homes can benefit financially as new and diverse housing becomes available. When new infill replaces older homes with low-assessed values, this can have a positive impact on the overall value of the neighborhood. Infill housing provides attractive housing for many who wouldn't otherwise be able to enjoy and contribute to the neighborhood. Keeping neighborhoods alive. Neighborhoods are living organisms. They grow, change, and evolve over time. Many homes in mature neighborhoods are already at or nearing the end of their life cycle. Infill housing provides the next lease on life for these properties. Infill can also revitalize the social well-being of the area by bringing more families and diverse compositions into existing neighborhoods. This, in turn, contributes to efficient utilization of schools and public amenities. By gradually increasing the number of people in the area, local businesses prosper and economic activity increases. Multi-generational living. Infill housing creates flexibility spanning generations. Infill housing makes room for diverse family structures by creating spaces for parents, children, grandparents, and renters to coexist in the same community. One example, seniors who have decided to move out of a single-family home can find alternative housing within the same neighborhood. Young adults leaving home can find housing within the neighborhood. Residents who desire a low-maintenance lifestyle that a multi-unit complex provides. Environmental sustainability. Infill helps the environment in a variety of ways. By densifying our existing neighborhoods through infill, important ecosystems surrounding the city can be left untouched. We can lower our carbon footprint by decreasing our dependency on cars. New housing units are more energy-efficient than existing older homes and commercial buildings. This reduces the city's overall environmental impact by lowering energy consumption. This also contributes to the feasibility, attainability, efficiency, and sustainability of public transit, which we hope to see one day soon. Why is infill housing so important to Steinbeck? Health. Infill helps create walkable, accessible, and healthy communities. Walkable. In walkable communities, people tend to walk more for enjoyment, convenience, and access to amenities. Urban sprawl reduces interest in walking. Physical health. A reduced dependency on cars encourages an active lifestyle. This can have a positive effect on our healthcare system. And accessibility. New construction provides more housing units for those with accessibility requirements. Some questions and answers that we, or questions that we often hear about infill housing is, why is this site suited for multifamily housing? Excuse me. Well, proximity to all the downtown amenities is one major thing. The hospital, 600 meters to the other side. If you walk all the way around to the front, 600 meters away. The event center, 225 meters. Clock tower at Reimer and Main is only 650 meters. The SCU, 530 meters, and Kinder Corner Daycare, 235 meters. So as you can see, many other things will be very close as well. We've had, this is a major one here. We have had 0% vacancy for the last 12 months straight at all of our properties in Steinbeck. This shows more than ever that infill housing is in high demand. We have more applicants than availability at all times. And I should mention, we've had a lot of people come from other countries, other provinces in the last year, which is great to see because that means we're actually helping draw new people in. How about traffic? This location on Home Street has access to three additional streets within one block. It's very unique, actually. Hanover, Reimer, and Hospital. Construction will not commence on this property until the Bethesda expansion is completed. Will my property values decrease? Traditionally, property values increase in growing vibrant communities. And I'll touch more on that after, or right now, actually, sorry. Yeah, so property values. I assembled some data specific to previous development completed on First Street, Steinbeck, between 2019 and 2022. So this is actually my, one of my properties that I developed, but I have also tied in the other properties across the street from me that were done by other developers. So three developments in total. And this data provides evidence of a higher percentage of increase than the other three properties provided on Cloverdale, Geesbrikt, and Westwood. And I, on those three houses that I pulled, which we'll get to, those are just random homes that I pulled nearby streets, very close by, but not right off of First Street. This first assessment you'll see here has, everything in blue is 2018. That's prior to, the year prior to me commencing the property at 55 First Street, which is in the very top corner there on that photo. So everything in blue is 2018, 2021. I know it's kind of small, but yeah, you can see. The green there is 2021. Sometimes it's 2021, 22. It'll be in green because that's when the development nearest to it was completed. And then yellow, last year, tax amount assessment last year when the first year after the properties were completed. So you'll see that that went up from 208,102 to 237,700. That property at 118 First Street. The next slide is a property at 112 First Street. This one says sold on the top, that's why I circled it, and that's why you'll see four highlights on that one. The one in pink, I have a note here that's sold for $175,000 only in June 2018. So that's previous to my development, which was lower than assessed value at the time. So the reason I bring a sold in here, a lot of these houses haven't sold for many years. So without doing an appraisal, we can't actually know for sure unless a house sells. Even an appraisal isn't perfect. When a house sells, then we know someone was willing to pay that. So here we can see that house sold prior to our development from 175. And this sale will have definitely contributed to decreased reassessment in 2018. So 2020, it took a little while for that to take effect, and it went down to 167,500, which was also a time with COVID that properties did dip a little bit. You'll see soon after that, 2021 and up, when we were developing our property right across the street from there, it's come up from 167 to 205 in assessment value. Next slide, please. 58 First Street, a little further down the other side and across from 55 First Street. This property went up from 145,000 to 160,900, respectively. Next slide, please. Property at 70, sorry, 64 First Street, went up from 286 to 294. Next slide, please. 80 First Street, went from 19500 to 21800. That's across the street as well, from, from kind of the south end, southeast end of 71 First Street, the last building that was completed. Next slide, please. 84 First Street, I, sorry, I forgot to do the one on the bottom there in blue, 2018. Value was 199,300. And it was 193,100 at the time we started in summer of 2019. And it went up to 238,200 assessed value. And the slight drop you'll see there was, every property that I looked at here had a drop during COVID before the interest rates went really low. Next slide, please. 93 First Street, 356,000 to 374,000. Next slide, please. 104 First Street, 218 to 228,900. And did I do it twice there by mistake? Oh, yeah, 104 First Street, and then 108 First Street is 206,000 to 216,000. And now we'll go over to the other three that are not on First Street. So you might ask, well, sure, didn't all property values go up during this time? The answer is, most did, because we have had a stable economy, and Canada, our prices, especially in Manitoba, tend to go up a little bit at a time. But you'll be interested to see, there's some, some of the properties I looked at went, the high, on the high end was 60,000. And look right here at Westwood, 6,400 increase since pre-First Street development, but it's actually $7,400 lower than the 2014 assessment of 214,600. Of all the examples I provided to you before this, all have surpassed their 2014 values, except for 80 First Street, that remains 2,800 lower than the 2014 assessed value. Of course, both of those, it could be for a variety of reasons. However, this data indicates assessment values of the properties provided along First Street haven't been negatively impacted due to new development, but rather positively impacted. Can see here, this one went up, but not as much as the others. Next slide, please. 69 Geesbrikt. This property in a nearby neighborhood has seen substantially less, only $1,000 gain in assessed value from 2018 to 2023. And to the properties on First Street neighboring the infill development that have seen from $6,700 to in excess of $60,000 increase in assessment value in the same time period. 72 Cloverdale, next slide, yeah. Only $4,200 increase in the same timeframe as the First Street property assessed properties provided. So that's it for those. Company track record, we have built around 200 residential units in the past five years. We strive to be leaders in the industry in quality, design, and resident living experience. We believe that this development would be a great asset to the city of Steinbeck. And in conclusion, I look forward to the potential for this development to be offered to our community and ask for your support today as the first step towards seeing this vision become a reality. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, I'll just have you stay at the podium for now. Councilor, any questions for the presenter? Go ahead. Go ahead, Counselors.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Specifically on the issue of parking, you've mentioned that you are planning to have underground parking, which would make up approximately half of the parking stalls. Are you saying that you are for certain doing underground parking, that that is a definite part of the plan?
Yes, that is my plan, yes.
So my follow-up question, and this is the information provided to us by our staff, where it states that underground parking is considered a story pursuant to the city's zoning bylaw. If the developer proceeds with this intended plan, it would require the developer to submit a variance application and would prompt an additional public hearing. So, which would mean that if we approve this, there'd have to be a future public hearing where we'd have to go through this all again. So my question is, why are we not dealing with that variance application at the meeting tonight as part of this application?
May I speak through the mayor to the, to the staff? I wasn't told that I had to do that now, so I'm not, I'm not really sure I can answer that. I would have had no problem asking for that if that's what's required.
Good question. We asked administration on this.
I'd like to ask administration a question, then. Have you, you've given Mr. Weeb any indication that this would have to go through a variance? The fact that we allow three stories, and if the, if the underground parking is considered a story, was, was that, was that passed on to Mr. Weeb?
It's my understanding that he was advised that a variance was required if underground parking was part of the plan.
Okay.
So, so I, I, yes, so I've talked to them about a variance, however, I wasn't aware that that variance for that requires a public hearing, so. I'm not here to waste your time, I, obviously, I've never done an underground parkade, so that's, that's something I would have requested if I knew I should today, because we're talking about it, I'm clearly showing you that there is a parkade, I'm not trying to hide that.
Okay.
Come here with the perfect intention, pure intention of doing it correctly, obviously.
Every, every variance requires a public hearing?
Okay, yeah.
In the future, just?
Usually I don't have any, any variances. We try to make sure to not have any variances on our plans that we submit, so that's probably why, that's not something I've dealt with on this, so I apologize if that wasn't done.
Anything further, Counselor?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Any further of counsel?
Not at this time.
Okay, you can sit down at this time. At this time, we would like to take comments, questions, or objections to this file. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Okay, go ahead. Just, I know you've been here before, but just.
I've never said my address, so.
Name and address, and then we'll.
I'm Kenton Dick, and I live at 362 Hospital Street. Mine is kind of a weird funnel-shaped property on Hospital Street that actually has neighbors five other properties. One of those properties is 274, so the back portion of my property, behind my garage and, and part of my backyard, is right up against the, one of the two properties in question here. So I have a whole variety of concerns, and I obviously do object to this plan, so I'm just going to go through some of them here. First, I just want to say that I want to be careful not to only object to this because it's in my backyard, quite literally. Though it is, I understand that, I think this is a bad project for the city and for the area, for multiple reasons outside of the fact that it's just next to my property. I don't necessarily have anything wrong with multifamily developments, and I understand the benefits they can have to the city. So first off, I don't think it fits the area at all. We've seen a map of the OCP, the Official Community Plan or City Plan, and it doesn't have any transitional zones really around it. The nearest transitional zone is on the other side of Hanover Street, which makes sense, because that is along kind of the Main Street corridor. And I understand that the city's goal is to have some of these types of buildings near some of those corridors as a way to transition from some of the busier areas into places like this, that are residential low-density and single-family. And this isn't close to Lowen, and it's quite a ways from Main Street. It's nearby, it's really a nice place to live for that reason, but it isn't in that corridor. And as the community plan pointed out, it is all residential low-density all around this property. In fact, they're all single-family homes, so every property that touches it, and you have to go a few properties away before you get anything other than single-family. Even the areas that are transitional zone have not been converted to residential medium-density or high-density. And despite the fact that it did show a map of a few other properties similar, it, none of those properties are really close to this at all. You can't see any of them down any of the streets nearby, it really isn't the case. This is also not an area in need of infill development. This is obviously my belief, but we heard a lot about infill development and its benefits. And we've seen some of those benefits in some areas, like was mentioned, First Street. However, most of the homes in this area are owned by the residents that live in them. They are not, they are not rentals. I'm not going to speak for anybody else who may want to speak for themselves. However, one of my neighbors was a rental unit when I moved in, and they purchased it from a person renting to them, and have since put a lot of money and time and effort into that property. And that's the kind of neighborhood this is. We're really pleased with our neighbors, and we have been since we moved in, and the effort that's been put into some of these older homes that have existed in town for a long time. Most of these homes are well taken care of and loved, and these two that are in question, 268 and 274, are no exception. Again, I've been neighbors with some of these folks. I know one of them is currently owned by the developer, but that transaction happened not long ago, and I know the people who lived in there beforehand, and, and were definitely great neighbors to have. Basically, my point on this infill development is, this is not maple wood. This is not an area that is rundown and is in desperate need of infill development. In addition to that, some of the things that were mentioned, especially near the end of the presentation, that really caught my eye, this is a very affordable neighborhood. And that's one of the things that makes it incredibly beautiful. I've lived there for nine years with my wife, Talon, eight years, eight years now that we moved in. And the reason we purchased here was because we could get into this neighborhood. We purchased our property for just under $200,000, and it would be assessed somewhere just over $200,000 at this point, in the conversations that we've had with realtors, et cetera. So it's really the perfect place to get into the market, it's beautiful, mature yards, that was another thing that was very important to us. We didn't want to buy into a new neighborhood that had absolutely no trees and whatnot. We've got beautiful maples, I know one of the two properties, 268, is one of the nicest trees in the neighborhood, I know that's not, you know, a reason to deny, but something that I really appreciate about it. One of the things that was mentioned in the presentation, these older homes, $200,000 and not climbing, yeah, that's kind of what makes it amazing. Looking at some of the other areas in town where you can buy homes that are entry-levels, thinking Lexington Village, et cetera, are largely in the $300,000 range, and many of them over that. So it really is a very important area for getting new families, young families into single-family homes. I know this has been a big issue, something that my generation has really struggled with, and something that actually is really great about Steinbach is that we still have something that's fairly affordable, and this is the most affordable area, and they're not rundown homes, so you can actually get into these homes. So that is very important to me, we could be taking away two homes, that would be very easy for some young family to get into, and replacing it with rental units that they're trying to cut out of. And I do understand the benefit of those rental units, but like I said, going back to the beginning, I don't think this is ideal place for these things for that reason. Despite the fact that it was mentioned that developer went door-to-door, we definitely did not receive a knock on our door in any of the weeks that we've had, nor did we receive a pamphlet or invitation to any sort of round table. And we are neighboring literally up against one of those properties, so I don't know what that was about, but it wasn't something that was extended out to us. Finally, and the last point is that this would just negatively impact my own yard. I'm not particularly concerned about my property values, I understand that that's not something that really happens when development goes in, but it is right up against my backyard. We would have a giant three-story building right there, and like I mentioned before, there's really no transition from that into something lower, it is just right in my backyard. So those are all of my concerns, thank you for taking the time, thanks a bunch.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Debbie Taves, live at 368 Hospital, which is like six feet to that property that's wanting to be built up. So we have these nice trees there, and nice yard and everything, and when he mentioned something about close to grocery stores, all the grocery stores are at the north end of the city. People have to drive there. There is no big grocery stores anywhere in Steinbach. Yeah, there's the little ones, and that's good, but families that need to do shopping, they need to go to the other end, not, there's no big shopping centers here. And the traffic. If there would be a police officer on any one of those three streets, any time of the day, 24 hours a day, the speeding. I've watched ambulance when they're in a hurry, and the traffic that comes there goes way faster than that ambulance does. It's ridiculous. I'm scared somebody is going to get killed there. We had shrubs on the front of our property, we took them down because it was a danger to the people walking on the street, or on the sidewalk. We'd back up, and we couldn't see anything. So we took that all down for our safety and for everybody else's. Now you're going to get some builder in there, and that traffic is going to go up phenomenally, like, it's ridiculous. And there's children that are playing there. There's that old folks down the road, like, it's, it's not safe, it's not safe. And if I wanted to live in Winnipeg, I would have bought in Winnipeg. I don't want to live in Winnipeg, I want to live in Steinbach. I love my neighborhood, it's awesome, it's great, the neighbors are good, good families. Now you want to get rid of two-family homes when this thing could be built anywhere else where, I've seen properties all over the place where they're here, suit to build, multifamily, so go there. Like, leave our neighborhood alone, we're happy with it, we love it. That, we are the ones that were renting, and we bought from, we, we've been there eight years. So I rented for six, well, it's going on nine years now, but, so yeah, so we rented there, and yes, it was very affordable for us to buy. I mean, at my age, like, so, so a young family, these houses should be for families, not, not getting these Winnipeg things in here. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. Thank you for the opportunity to, to come and, my name is Grant Workington, I'm here from 251 Home Street, Steinbach, and so I'd be across the street from it, and I would voice my objection to this development for concerns that, that have been listed by how Kenton said so eloquently, and, and that, yeah, the increased traffic. I came here with my wife and four-month-old, hoping to be in my home, is I was looking for an affordable area to live, and, and found 251. And so it was, yeah, looking forward to, to raising my, my family there. So the increased traffic and the safety would be, would be concerns for me.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone?
Good evening, council members. My name is David Workington from 412 Hospital Street, so it's just down the street a little further. Thank you for taking the time tonight to consider the thoughts and concerns of our families, and specifically this region of our community, where so many of us have called home for years. Growing up in Winnipeg has always made me appreciate the balance that you've struck here in the city, in that, for the most part, you've been able to maintain a healthy balance of growth while honoring the city's heritage and history, instead of the seemingly popular route that so many take of just tear it all down and build new, at the expense of losing what once was. Almost 10 years have gone by for our family of five, and we've seen much change in that time living on Hospital Street. For many of us on the street, we have watched an entire street block demolished for the new event center, three homes bulldozed, and one moved away directly in front of our house for the hospital's parking lot, and an ongoing addition for the hospital currently. All of this taking place on the street we call home, and all within the last two years. Now, as much as we dislike the glaring street lamps that light up the front of our house every night with the new parking lot, we understand and appreciate that the hospital simply needs more staff parking, and the large addition is going to be a much-needed piece in providing healthcare for our growing community. As busy as the event center will make our home streets, we can understand the business opportunity and revenue this brings to the city as well. However, we have major concerns and obviously do not support this new business venture proposed here tonight by Kingdom Home Builders, to destroy not only the homesteads of the willing participants of the proposed lots in question, but also the destruction of privacy of the neighboring homes directly nearby, many of which have become our dear friends. This new complex challenges the very thing many of us have moved into this community for in the first place, a welcoming, safe home in a relatively quiet neighborhood to raise our children. A three-story apartment complex this size will diminish all of the privacy for the neighboring homes whose yards and windows will be overlooked by many of the top floors, not to mention the amount of additional vehicle traffic. It's been stated here already how crazy it's actually gotten. Almost to the equivalent of an entire block, I think it was 55 extra stalls, which means those amount of cars, will surely change the dynamics of our homes, as well as all of us who have already experienced within the three major construction projects last year. On a personal note, with the constant piers being driven into the ground and heavy machinery, our home has experienced walls cracking, tiles falling, and the least fun of all, a major sewer rupture that ravished our home for three months, all collectively happening during these foundational steps. Yes, obviously, it's an older home, you can take that as you will. But this, the type of project proposed here tonight at this magnitude has the potential to shock the surrounding homes nearby with damage, just like ours experienced. There's also a good chance that one of Steinbach's last enormous heritage trees, the one that was talked about before, it's positioned directly beside this complex, and there is possibility that it might not endure the upheaval and root destruction that it could bring. Again, for the betterment of our city in healthcare and recreation, many of us have kept quiet in understanding that these things are necessary, but from what we can see, nothing about this proposed complex is that. It would seem that a builder has looked upon the beauty that we've collectively maintained here on these streets, only to capitalize on a business venture at the expense of those of us who call this place home. We have no intention of moving, nor would many of us have the choice financially with the way the economy and housing market is. It has now been years of construction in our community, and tonight, with respect, we're asking you to please consider the families with little ones, that your choices here tonight make a difference on their futures. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Sheila Rediger, I live at 255 Hanover Street with my husband and my daughter. While our house will not be in the backyard of the proposed building, we do feel that it will affect our neighborhood. One of the reasons why we purchased a home in this area is because of the character that the area brings, with the older homes, the large yards, and the mature trees. Since moving to this area, we have seen more and more homes be removed, more trees cut down, and more new buildings put up. With this has come excessive noise and overcrowded streets. We feel that our neighborhood is slowly being taken away from us. The history of Steinbach is so important, it got us to where we are today. I urge council to help preserve our historical neighborhood in Steinbach. There are other cities that have successfully done this. Winnipeg would be one example, where the Wosley area has maintained its character and history while still being a part of the city. If we add an apartment complex to our area, not only will it add to the traffic and noise, but it will be taking away more of our historic residential area. Mr. Weeb noted in his presentation the number of homes that have already been lost in our area. Regarding the presentation from Kingdom Homes, Mr. Weeb had noted that the proposed building would reduce the dependency on cars, and would also reduce the carbon footprint. From what I can see, this would actually increase the carbon footprint in the area. We have to remember that we're replacing two single-dwelling units with a large multi-dwelling unit, so that means more cars, more traffic, more parking in the area as well. I do want to thank council for their time to listen to us this evening, and I hope that our points made this evening will be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, go ahead.
My name is Gary Snyder, I live at 5
I live at 534 Wilson. Uh, Mayor Funk, city councillors, thank you for this opportu, opportunity to speak to this matter. I'd like to speak up for taxpayers and the hundreds of people who would like to live in a vibrant and economically prosperous downtown. For these reasons, I'm speaking in favor of this zoning change and proposed multifamily development. If we want a viable city with an improving quality of life, reasonable taxes, we need growth in our downtown neighborhoods. This inevitably means more density and a wider variety of housing choices. Many of our older neighborhoods have housing stock built in the 1940s, the 50s, and the 60s, mostly on large lots. These homes and neighborhoods need renewal, and while change is hard, it is essential to the health of our community. This proposed location on Home Street, close to Hospital Street, is well-suited for this use, especially because it's so close to downtown. It's a perfect walkable location within minutes of two elementary schools, restaurants, grocery stores, banks, a credit union, butcher's shop, our library, and what will be an amazing event center. It's also just 120 meters or about two minutes away from a growing, major local employer, Bethesda Hospital. Walkable neighborhoods are good for our city. People wanna be close to services, shopping, and work. For trips under 10 minutes, many people will consider walking. A comprehensive study by the consulting firm Arup found that pedestrians support local business, help to realize safer streets, and make for a more sociable city. People who walk are in better health, experience mental health improvements, and are far more likely to care for the places in which they walk. Our downtown businesses are locally owned and they keep money circulating within our economy, within the community. Adding 40 to 60 residents within easy-walking distance means more clients, revenue, and economic goodness for our downtown. A few objectors suggest that multifamily apartments should be built somewhere else, which often means out on the sprawling edges of town, closer to the big-box stores that send their revenues out of our city. I wonder how many signatures one would get if downtown business owners and their employees were asked about this zoning change request. Newcomers to a neighborhood are not a threat. They're just like you and me. They don't want noise. They have their own parking spots. They appreciate privacy, and they also get upset by reckless drivers. Many of the objections we heard tonight are from fear. There are also suppositions not borne out by facts. The people who will eventually live here want what you want, s, safe streets and good neighbors. And please know that builders and developers, their livelihood, it requires them to be open to finding win-win solutions. Privacy, lighting, parking, noise, traffic, there are ways to address these and to lessen their impacts. All it takes are conversations. One thing is certain: our, our city will continue to grow. How it grows will affect us all. Infill development, better land use, and residential renewal is the way forward to a more prosperous city that works for everyone. Please consider the best interests of our whole city and support this zoning change request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Lady and gentlemen. Um, my name is Joe Weeb, and Luke is my son. Um, I have to say that I was, uh, very, very thrilled when I moved back to the Steinbach area. I was gone to Saskatchewan for 15 years. And, uh, I was thrilled when I came back, and I, though I did come back to visit, but you know, it's not the same as when you move and you settle back in. To see, um, a lot of the things that have happened here while I was gone, and I would like to commend the existing administration as well as the previous administrations for having a vision of keeping the downtown part of Steinbach alive. And it's evidenced in, in a number of things that I see when I came back, you know, like the, the new credit union. And now, of course, this new event center is phenomenal, following the lead of a place like Winnipeg did it with their, with their hockey rink. Do stuff close to the people instead of like people having to, you know, go a long way to do anything. And a lot of the, the places, I'm amazed at how many of the small businesses have survived. Um, and compared to what I saw in the last years of my trucking career, I traveled from Saskatchewan down to the Mexico border and mostly serviced rural customers, which means that I drove through a lot of smaller cities. And it was amazing to see and talk to local people, uh, how the downtowns were just like crumbling and falling down, boarded up, houses empty, businesses closed, and, uh, and I could, I could name you city after city, uh, especially the range from 10,000 to 25,000 people, that the city has grown, but the downtown is dead. The downtown is gone. Um, one gas station in a 20,000, um, population city in downtown, you have to drive like 10 miles to get gas. And the things that we can do in downtown Steinbach with the hairdressers, that like a lot of the businesses have been mentioned already in the presentations previous, but there's so many others that weren't mentioned that are all so close and accessible to this. So we need to keep people living near the downtown. If those businesses are gonna thrive and, I, I should say survive, but thrive, that's what everybody hopes for, right? So I, I really, I really think, in the big picture of things, just like the, um, gentleman who preceded me, is that, eh, looking at the whole picture, it's understandable that there are some people, their life will change. And I think all of you who are here and are part of this administration have seen a lot of change. And I'll never forget, um, when I first came to Steinbach and I got to know the businessman that was my employer, personally, we got a great relationship, Mr. Milton Penner. And he said to me one day in his office, and this is, goes back to about 1980, he said, "You know, Joe," he says, "if we're not going forward, we're going backward." 25 years later, when I was, uh, uh, top-level executive for a company in Winnipeg that had 1,000 employees, the owner of that company, and we met weekly in his office, and he says, "You know to me, Joe, if we're not going forward, if we're not growing, we're going backward." And I think the city of Steinbach has, has adopted that and done a great job and is doing a great job of, of making sure that we have growth, but we need growth downtown as well as around the edges. Thank you kindly.
And you, just before you leave, could we have your address?
Pardon me?
Your address?
Uh, number 6, 107 Brant Street.
Okay.
An apartment, by the way.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would, uh, wish to speak? Go ahead.
My name is Harry Wilkins. I live at 401 Walnut Street, and I quite frequently walk down to Main Street, which is a farther distance away from Main Street than Hospital Street. Uh, it's not impossible to walk. That's what the sidewalks are there for. Uh, but I would like to address the issue of affordability that was brought up here, where people talk about cheap housing, the fact that we have, you know, 0% vacancies for people who are trying to move here, seeing this as a desirable city. If we don't allow for infill housing and we force, uh, these potential mixed-use density zones to be on the outskirts of town, it will keep property values lower and technically more affordable, but it ignores taxation. When you push something farther away on the outskirts of town or not next to the current existing development with mixed uses between low-density and medium-density, that means you have to expand the road out into town. You have to take away potential farmland. You have to bulldoze existing trees on the outskirts of town. You have to expand the water infrastructure so that you can build pipes out to these new developments that are put somewhere else. You have to expand the electrical grid. You have to expand the sewage maintenance. You have to expand sidewalks. These things are not a one-time payment. They cost money to maintain over time. If you don't allow for infill inside of the city, you will raise your effective tax rate and by forcing these people to live in single-family dwellings instead of in mixed residential uses, you bring fewer people into the city at a time, which means while at the same time increasing your tax burden, you have fewer people in the city you are sharing that increased burden amongst. If you were to split a bill, would you rather split it with one person or 10 people? One of them is going to be effectively cheaper, and everyone understands that. Uh, by keeping the property values low, you do make it theoretically more affordable to move here, but you also drastically increase your tax rate over the long term. Like, these roads need maintenance. People know that their tax dollars go to maintain roads. And if you don't build on existing infrastructure, that means you will necessarily have to expand and build new infrastructure that increases the, uh, the burden of this, uh, council's, uh, budget. So I would just like to point out the fact that, um, there are many existing cities in the world where we can see that population density does not necessarily correlate to all these negative impacts. Uh, for example, Tokyo, Japan has a, a population density 13 times higher than that of Steinbach, and it's, you know, consistently rated one of the safest places in the world to live. Uh, in addition to that, if you think about going on vacation to places like Europe in terms of traffic, if you go to an old European city that was built with these ideas of density in mind, even in the urban areas, there is actually a decrease in traffic because when more people live closer together, you increase walkability and acc, and potential access to public transportation, which means in the long term, fewer cars will be on the road, not more. It was only after World War II that we started building our suburbs this way and increased our demand of traffic. But if you look throughout all of history and the places you like to vacation to, uh, that are older and have been around longer, they, they understood the prospect of building for the long term. And I would just like to urge all of you to consider, how many of you personally know someone right now who cannot afford to buy a home and the fact that we are in a housing crisis? And then think about the idea that we're gonna, you know, deny potential development of, you know, mixed-use residential housing over, uh, concerns that can very easily and have been addressed, and not just other parts of the world, but within our own country. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
So my name is Amy Craker, and I live at 276 Hanover Street. Our house, um, is immediately across the street from the homes that would be immediately impacted by these properties or by this property. And I'm here to stand in solidarity and support with the neighbors that are coming to speak out against this property. Um, I have lived in this same block for the last 22 years, and we have chosen to live in this block specifically for the reason that it is single-family homes with larger lots and mature trees. This is one of the charming things about living on Hanover. And when you look out on the street and see all the, the trees hanging over the street and the magic of, uh, living in such a beautiful neighborhood, we are choosing to live there. We hope to retire and stay in our same home and enjoy the beauty of living in a neighborhood that has so many lovely homes with lovely neighbors. And I feel that a neighborhood changing with a three-story apartment with all of these families living together would drastically change not only the appearance of the neighborhood, but increase a lot of the traffic. I also wanna speak to what the developer was saying about their hope for the building would increase the diversity of the ages of people that would be living in the neighborhood. And I think if the council members would just take a moment and look out into the foyer outside, you would see a large number of people that really care about their neighborhood of diverse ages as well. It's not just old seniors living on these streets. It's a lot of young families. And I can attest personally, living on our street, to the homes that were immediately across from us and next to us used to be, uh, our two rentals or, um, rental across the street, and they have been purchased by families who are renovating, investing their own funds in improving their property value by making an affordable home, a more beautiful home that their family can enjoy, that has a yard, that has mature trees, and it has improved over the last five years. It's remarkable how many homes the homeowners are taking that time and using their funds, which are limited for a lot of families, but they are investing it into their property and beautification of their property. And I just would hate to see that change. Now, for our home, we are not directly impacted by the view of a three-story apartment, but I am concerned for the people who live immediately across the street from us, who will lose all privacy in their backyard. Yes, there's a hedge in the front, but they are going to lose. All those, those homes are now gonna have three stories of people looking down on their yards. And I, I wonder, if we were all honest here, how many of us would like to have that invasion of privacy of three stories of homes with people with balconies on their deck looking down into your yard when you're having your family time or privacy, where you just wanna have date night or whatever it might be, to have all of that audience there on your yard? That is a huge concern for me. So I am concerned on behalf of those people that will be directly impacted, and I wanna stand with support of those neighbors that are against this proposition. So, thank you.
My name is Melissa Platt. I live at 388 Hospital Street. I submitted a letter to the city councillors, uh, on Friday with a petition with about 43 signatures, as mentioned before. I wasn't planning to speak, but with all the things that have come up, I thought that it would be a good opportunity. So, since we're talking about Tokyo and Europe, I'll talk about Northwestern Ontario, where I grew up. I grew up in low-income housing. I'm breaking a cycle of poverty and renting in my family line. I live at, um, Hospital Street now for 15 years with my husband, Louis Platt, and my three boys. Uh, we have had all our babies at Bethesda. It's been great to just walk across the streets when you're in labor and give birth. And all this to say, like, I'm very content with my home, like, we've been looking around in the past number of years to see if there's anywhere else we'd possibly like to move in Steinbach area, and the affordability is just there with this area. I just feel like it should stay single-family homes. I met, like, so many neighbors going around with the petitions that are just having, like, their new, first baby. There's a couple of homeschooling moms with boys that, you know, they wanna stay home and homeschool. I work myself part-time, so I feel like if we get rid of these homes, it's just bumping families out of their neighborhood and they're, well, like, where are the options? So I feel like switching this neighborhood out and adding an apartment when we have space, like, we have space to build, this is Canada, like, there is land. Um, I just feel like it could be built somewhere else and the neighborhood should stay as is. Thank you.
Is there anyone? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Bergen. I live at 398 Hospital Street. Me and my husband purchased our home 10 years ago because of the neighborhood. We knew that we needed a first home. We wanted something with a big yard that our children could grow up in, play in. We wanted a community that we knew our children could make friends with, that we'd have multiple families that could look out for our children as well as us look out for theirs. Um, we recently had new ma, new, new neighbors in our backyard a couple of years ago. We have some new neighbors beside us. We get along great with them. We enjoy them. We talk to them when we're outside. Winter's a little harder, you know? It's kinda cold. But the community that's in this area, the atmosphere, just the fact that everybody kinda looks out for everybody else has been really enjoyable, and it makes me wanna stay in this area. We, like, previous people have said they've looked at their areas, and yes, I would love to upgrade to a bigger home, but I love the neighborhood, and I would rather stay in this neighborhood the way it is, with single-family homes, with families looking out for each other, than to have a three-story complex move in, especially on a street that already has... on a street that already has so much trouble with traffic and parking. With us, with me living on Hospital Street and the parking being removed, the street parking, I'll admit, it's been nice for us, but at the same time, we've seen how it's impacted the streets around us. Home Street, there is always parking. All the way down, people parked on the street. If we want visitors to come over, they have to sometimes park three or four streets away because we've been taking away parking around the hospital, which is a good thing. I agree. But to add now a three-story complex with the extra parking that's going to come from people visiting those people in the complex, not just the people living there, I think will sorely impact parking in the area. The building alone will impact the atmosphere of the neighborhood. And all in all, it's just not a good fit for this neighborhood. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Louis Platt. I'm at 388 Hospital Street. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just want to reiterate some of the things that my wife already mentioned and Kent and Dick already said about, just kind of zooming in on the bigger picture here, or zooming out a little bit. What our big concern is, is essentially the removal of affordable entry-level homes from our neighborhood. I just feel like taking away more single-family homes is just adding another blow to the aspirations of first-time buyers in our city. Steinbach prides itself on being a place where families can put down roots and invest in their future. By demolishing homes such as these to put up rental units, we are narrowing the path to homeownership for young families. As was mentioned, the neighborhood already has many families that are having their first child or raising school-age children, and these older neighborhoods are desirable for families of this type. And the disappearance of homes such as this from the market, replaced by rental properties, threatens to erode this much-loved aspect of our community. Homeownership is not just a transaction. It's the cornerstone of a vibrant and resilient community. It provides residents with a stake in the future, a sense of belonging, and foundation for financial security. While we acknowledge the need for rental properties, and Kingdom Home Building has a vision for excellence in rentals, we believe that they should not come at the expense of an established neighborhood such as ours. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Erica Dirksen, and I'm at 271 Hanover Street. I've been there for almost five years. Also a university student and a mother, and this is a very precious time that I'm taking out of my evening to be here and oppose this. In terms of communication, despite being directly adjacent to the rear of the proposed property, I never received any communication whatsoever from the developer about this property and about what was going to happen. My backyard is right there. There would be a property right up against it. During the construction of the event center and the hospital, our street and our area has put up with a lot. During the pile, while the pylons were being driven for the event center, I actually had things fall off of my walls. I was woken up in the morning multiple times by very loud pile driving and construction noises. There is mud on our street constantly. There is cars absolutely packing our roads constantly, both on Home Street and on my Street Hanover. And our neighborhood has put up with a lot. And I think a lot of us were really looking forward to the construction taking a pause after these projects were complete. In terms of affordable housing, I am a homeowner today because of this neighborhood. And I would not be a homeowner if this neighborhood had not been there because it is one of the very, very few affordable housing locations in this city. Even those affordable housing places like Lexington, as someone else mentioned, are more expensive. I also, when we initially bought this house, my husband and I considered maybe we would flip it. Maybe we would do some work on it and make a bit of a profit and move somewhere else. It took us very little time, being in this neighborhood, to realize this is not a flipping neighborhood. It is not the type of neighborhood you put money into a house and you leave. When we moved in, as Amy mentioned, there was a lot of rental properties. Our home was previously rental property, and it was quite worn down. It was old. We put some work into it, and over the next couple of years, the properties around us also were purchased and had very amazing families put hard-earned money into these houses to make them forever homes. And this is not a, in a house that we plan on flipping and selling for profit. This is a home for us, and this has become a home for all of the neighbors around us as well, who have done similar things to their properties. We've put our heart and soul into this place. We bought it because it was older, affordable, mature trees, large lots. Like Amy said, our neighborhood has all kinds of people. My neighbor to one side is a senior. My neighbor in another area are expecting their first child. There's middle-aged people. There's all kinds of people. There's lots of diversity. And all of us in this neighborhood consider Steinbach and this specific area to be a very cozy home for us, and it is not. You can build your development somewhere else. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Colin Silvering. I live at 36 Geesburg Street. I am in the unique position to comment on this building development because I live next to a bunch of homes and apartments built by Kingdom Homes on First Street, one street down from me. I believe this notion that this area is affordable, it's no longer affordable. After COVID, that kind of ruined things. I am looking to buy a house, but I don't really think that's possible in the future. So renting is my only opportunity, and this just increases the opportunities for that. As he said, there is no vacancy in buildings like these, and there's always applicants, so that limits my options there as well. And I would like to comment on the fact that people seem to think that the building won't fit into this neighborhood. I believe it'll fit perfectly into this neighborhood. You have multiple large buildings, like the hospital there and the arena about one block over, and those are big towering buildings, talking like 40, 50, 60 feet tall. And then you compare that to literally just across the street, 50 feet from it is a small, one-story home. It doesn't make much sense, but if you build a three-story building there and transition, kind of like a step-down idea, it provides a transition and a buffer to the neighborhood and allows that area to be kind of, I don't know how to say, kind of smoothed over and transitioned with the rest of the buildings around it. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with comments, questions, or objections to this file?
Good evening. My name is Alan Teal. I'm at 368 Hospital with Debbie. I'm going to repeat a few things because everybody made really good points, mostly everybody. I think a lot of has been asked of this neighborhood already with the construction that's been happening. It's not a derelict boarded-up neighborhood with a gas station 10 miles away. If it was, maybe it would qualify for infill housing. Nobody's arguing the merits of infill housing. But where's the balance? There already is quite a bit in that area and around it. And I know council has challenges. You have money that goes out. You have, must have money that comes in, and that would serve that purpose. But my concern is, and I'm not trying to be smart alecky, but if you look 30 years into the future, maybe 40, that entire map will look like the bottom left-hand corner. Where do we, where do we strike that balance? That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else with comments, questions, or objections to this file?
I'd just like to add one thing. My name's Terry Wilkins from 401 Walnut. The reason that the bottom left-hand of this map looks so blighted is because everything that was greenery there had to be bulldozed to build infrastructure such as roads because the growth of the city with every house being an individually-owned, single-family dwelling unit, that all of the amenities had to be placed on the outskirts of town because everything had to be spread farther apart. When everything is spread farther apart and you bulldoze to make giant parking lots to accommodate for the cars because everything is farther away, so you can't walk and have to drive there, you necessarily take away more of the natural greenery and nature. If you think about a road with 50 people on it, if each of those people is individually in their own car, it will take up much more space than one bus with 50 people on it on the same road, even though it's the same number of people. Density means that things can be closer together and not as spread afar apart. When you spread things farther apart, that is what causes people to have to drive to go places. The reason there are concerns about traffic is because we have a lack of infill. The farther away you push something from your own backyard, the more you necessitate car use, the more you have to bulldoze for parking lots, and the more expensive it becomes in the long term to maintain it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, if there's anyone that hasn't spoken that wants to speak, I do want to make sure we save time for you. But is there anyone else with comments, questions, or objections? Okay, we'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here that hasn't spoke that wants to speak today? We want to make it, the podium open to you. Go ahead, take the podium.
Good evening. My name is Eliana Workington. I live at 251 Home Street. Thank you for inviting us to be here, to participate, and to hear from us as the neighbors of Home Street. I'd just like to read the email that I had sent earlier, and again, just formally state my opposition to this matter. It was also mentioned that there's 43 people that have currently signed the petition. And while we all here can speak to the matter, we can say various opinions. Ultimately, the decision is yours. And I'd just humbly like to ask, how much opposition does it take to be heard on this matter? So I'll just proceed with my email. "Good morning. I want to state my opposition to the rezoning of Home Street to make a multifamily building and parcade. We live on Home Street near the 274 and 268 Home Street addresses. This proposal would be extremely upsetting and disruptive to our family and the current residents residing in the area. The Home Street area is an advantageous neighborhood for families presently, as it offers a quaint, mature neighborhood close to the amenities of the downtown area. However, rezoning Home Street to add a three-story, 32-unit multifamily building and parcade will impede these benefits and have a negative impact to the area. Constructing a multifamily building and parcade raises concerns with the substantial increase to traffic to the neighborhood, limited parking, demolishing mature trees, light pollution, noise pollution, invading neighbors' privacy, disruption to our homes as the foundations are impacted, and disrupting our homey community. Moreover, the proposal would increase safety concerns by having a significant increase of residents and their co-patriots. It raises concerns from a traffic perspective at an already busy intersection with a heavy flow of traffic on Hospital and Home Street. Vehicles come off Hospital Street onto Home Street quickly and with reduced visibility as it is an angled street and not perpendicular to Hospital. This already causes concerns about safety to a neighborhood filled with young families, but to add an increase in traffic from a 32-unit multiplex would only exacerbate the problem. We implore you to keep Home Street zoned residential low-density and oppose the proposal. Thank you sincerely for your time and consideration."
Okay, I'll ask this question one last time. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections? Okay, seeing none, I will trust that everyone that's wanted to speak will have been able to speak today. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the developer if you want to address any of the objections. No? Okay. Well, then, gathering all this information, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Susan?
Motion to approve.
Is there a secondary?
I'll second it.
Okay, go ahead.
This is a very difficult file, obviously, given the motion and the comments we have heard tonight. First of all, I just want to say I can totally understand the construction fatigue in the area, whether it's with all the things going on with the hospital, with the event center. There has been a lot going on there, and I can definitely understand and empathize that that must be quite taxing. This is my fourth year on council, and since my first term, this council has consistently and intentionally talked about how we keep our downtown healthy and vibrant. There's a lot of research that shows that a healthy downtown is essential to the health of an entire community. We have stuck out our necks before on this. I would say, we, when it comes to having the SCU downtown, a lot of effort went into having the SCU build downtown versus on the outskirts, on the north side, because we wanted to have our downtown vibrant. When it came to the event center, we took a lot of heat. The majority of people we talked to and during this process wanted to see this event center at a greenfield location outside of town, which exactly would mean that people would need to drive there. It wouldn't be walkable. The cost of servicing would mean the cost of that project would be even higher. So we've really been intentional about making decisions to keep our downtown vibrant. The thing about this project is, although it's not in the transition zone, it is very close. And what's interesting, it is right across the street from multi-level development, the hospital being right there. It's very close to the event center. I drove by there again today, and I just thought, you know, this is a really good location for a project like this, particularly because it's at the corner of the street. If it wouldn't be at the corner of the street, maybe it'd be given more pause, but the access to it is on that corner really makes it, I think, a good, a good location for a project like that. The other piece I like about it is we're not, we're all aware of the challenges with our healthcare system and finding healthcare workers. If this is a project, because it's right by the hospital, that can, you know, point people in favor of working in our healthcare system in Steinbach, I think even that's just a really big benefit. Couple of other things I really like is that this, this building has an elevator, and that is very rare in three-story buildings in our community. Because there's an elevator, that means it gives seniors opportunity to live there because they will not have to do stairs. And we all know our population is aging, so I think that's a real benefit. Or, you know, people who have disabilities as well, this opens us up for an opportunity for them to be in a place that has an elevator. So I think that's a big benefit as well. We have received opposition for that's a big benefit as well. We have received opposition for multifamily infill developments before. There's one across some Woodlawn School. There's one kind of behind the library. There's also one that predates my time, but there's a three-story one there, right where the event center is, Maplewood. And I also know Maplewood Manor is actually on Home Street, and that would be multifamily as well. I really want to empathize. I know change is hard in a neighborhood, and we see it with infill, or we see it in areas where there's been no construction behind a residential area, and all of a sudden, a whole new development is going up. Like, so I don't want to, I'm not minimizing, you know, how hard this is maybe for the neighborhood. Having said that, I just think, big picture, for the community, for that area, for our downtown, for the hospital, I think the benefits outweigh the costs in this particular situation. So for that reason, I'm moving to approve the project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The request here is to rezone two properties from residential low-density to residential medium-density. And these, as everybody knows, these are on the corner of Home Street and Reimer Avenue, or Hospital, I should say. And it is, it's in its own transition zone, I would think. It's between the hospital and residential. I really appreciate the comments made and the passion from all the people living in single-family homes in that area. I know that we moved from a single-family home into 50 feet behind our house. When I sit on my deck, 50 feet behind is a three-story building, and it works very well. There's nine decks that look onto our backyard, and it works. I know that it works. But I'm in favor of this for a number of reasons. The properties are within walking distance of financial institutes, the libraries, the smaller grocery stores in downtown, recreational activities, and potentially workplace. As mentioned, the hospital's right there. They are going to be employing a lot more people, and this isn't the last expansion. This is just another one. So they will continue to expand. That footprint isn't necessarily today in the right place, but that's where it is, and I'm sure that that footprint is going to continue to expand, meaning more people required to work. That means if we can get, improve our density downtown, improve our, more people living close by, they will walk to work, and they will have those opportunities. Many of our older downtown core are large lots, and we've been struggling with this all over Steinbeck, not just in that area. And large lots were very common in Steinbeck, in many older communities, parts of the communities, because families, single-family homes were built and would hold large gardens and maybe a chicken coop in the backyard. And, but that's what, how they fed their families. And that's no longer what happens today. What happens today, as you all know, those large backyards don't hold gardens or fruit orchards anymore as much. But there are some great trees in Steinbeck. I've talked about trees in my openings in the past. But what do we do with these large lots? Developers have told us time over time that to buy a home and rip it down and build another single-family home on these large lots is not feasible. It's not financially feasible to do. So I appreciate the fact that people are fixing up the old homes, but eventually, they too will be need replacing. But with what, if you can't afford a single-family, to build, rebuild a single-family home? As indicated in the mandatory support, this, the infill policy dictates what actually will be built. The plan is for a three-story. I think the height allowed is 36 feet, if I have that right. But infill policy will dictate exactly what and how it will be built. The last year has not been kind to the people of Home Street and that area. I recognize that, because I drive through there on a daily basis. And I'm also get stopped by the construction, and I have to wait for them to back up, and I have to listen to their beeping horns. I'm just thankful for all of you that they're not working 24-hour days. And, but I see that, too. There is a frustration that comes with that as well. And our streets will have to be rebuilt. We've stopped, the city has actually planned not to rebuild those streets while that construction is taking place. But expect that, once that construction is complete, that there will be street construction or overlay in those areas because of ongoing. We do need to build our community as, and we've recognized this in our official community plan. Our official community plan started 15 or so years ago, and it lays out how we expect the city to grow. But we've always talked about growing up instead of out, simply because of the costs in the long term, and we continue to do that. And this makes sense under the future plan, and how we've always spoken about higher density in our downtown core, and keeping people living in our downtown core. How, what does that look like? It looks like you grow up, not, not out with, with the urban sprawl, because it is a lot more expensive. Urban sprawl is a lot more expensive in the short term and in the long term for our communities. For me, moving these lots to medium-density, it works. Newer current employees of Bethesda or the event center would, this would even opportunity to work within our downtown core. There's many jobs in our downtown core, and people could choose to live there, and then they wouldn't need to drive anywhere. I think, overall, in our, in our big picture, official community plan, I think this works, and for those reasons, I'm in favor of this.
Go ahead, Counselor Siskin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we're gonna have a split vote on this, because I'm gonna vote against this. And there are a number of reasons why I'm going to, why I'm gonna vote against. The, the point of a public hearing is to hear both from the applicant and also to hear from the neighborhood. There's a reason why we send out notices to the neighborhood, because we want to hear feedback from the neighborhood, and we take that into consideration. In this case here, we've heard some very strong feedback from the neighborhood. And I want to point something out here, because, again, anyone can speak during a public hearing, but the people we're really interested in hearing from are the people who actually live in the area. So it's all well and good when we have a few people that come and live far away and want to give their two cents and give us sort of a, you know, sort of bit of a lecture about what the neighborhood should be feeling. But I'm not interested in hearing about Tokyo and their density and all that. I want to hear from the neighbors, and I want to hear from the applicant, and that's what I want to focus on. And so, in regards to the, in regards to the application here, I think the neighborhood has made some good points, as far as, this is not a rundown area. This is a well-established area. It's not in the transitional zone. Yes, it's reasonably close to the transitional zone, but it is not. And the people in this area would like for it to continue as single-family homes. And there seems to be this assumption, that I understand the reasoning in terms of, yes, density in general, in theory, is good, but so are, so are single-family homes. Those are good, too. I like single-family homes. I live in one. I intend to continue living in a single-family home as long as I can. I do not want to send the message that single-family homes aren't good, and that necessarily, and I'm not seeing anything here that's wrong with how the neighborhood is right now. I'm not hearing any convincing case for what the problem is. Yes, we need more housing. We need more development. We're getting that in Steinbeck. That's happening in a variety of areas in the city. But when we have this many people that are coming out that live right there, that are giving some pretty good reasons for why they're not in favor of the change, I think we need to take that into consideration. I also want to point out, as I, when I'd asked the applicant earlier about the question, and I think members of council, we might be losing sight of this, if this gets approved, we're having another public hearing. It's, we're gonna go through this all again, because for whatever reason, the applicant did not submit a variance application to, for the underground parking. Our staff says that the notification was given, and I believe our staff, and so, but we're gonna have to go through this all again, and the neighborhood will all get a chance to comment once again, because the applicant has said that he is for certain going ahead with the underground parking and with this plan that we've had presented to us here. So I don't, I have concerns about the plan itself. I have concerns about, about just this assumption that we, that we just have to, have to put this change in place. And so, yes, there have been times, many times, when I voted in favor of multifamily developments and rezoning in this, but in this case, I'm not in favor. I think it's fine, leaving it as it is.
Go ahead, Counselor Ebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This application has put council into a unpopular position. And I'd like to start by thanking the developer for a very good presentation. I'd also like to thank each person that attended here to voice their opinion and to state what their values are and why they want to maintain those values. Yes, this is a single-family area, but we've heard from residents that moved to Steinbeck because this is what they wanted. They wanted single-family dwellings. They wanted dwellings that were affordable, and they chose this area. Yes, this area is close to amenities. That's why they chose this area. We hear about three-story buildings and density and how people can walk to different amenities. Well, I also see people in this area pushing baby carriages and going downtown. These people will be close to the event center. These people living here in single-family dwellings are close to the hospital. They value the same things that people value in apartment blocks. But these people specifically chose, and they've invested. We've heard of people that have been here for a couple of years, that have been here for two years, and that have bought buildings that they thought they were going to live in, in a peaceful area for a number of years. And they now see this as not being practical for them in the future, such such a building be built in their area. Yes, maybe it'd be more suitable if there was a duplex or a fourplex for transitioning into this area, but as Deputy Mayor Swigster said, this is not in the transitional zone. This is on the outskirts of it. But in this situation, if that was me, and I know that I shouldn't always make a decision if that was me or if that was my children living there, but I've heard people that are torn, living in this area and wanting to stay. So I appreciate every person that came here today and gave their story, and what's important, what are their values? And I've heard you loud and clear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything further, counsel?
Counselor Pan. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank the applicant, as well as the community that came out, that came out today. Truth be told, with discussion from both sides, and also with there being a split council that has spoken both for and against, I personally don't find much to disagree with on either side of the decision. I, pardon me. In terms of a location, I think that this is a, actually a very good, suitable location for, for medium dens, pardon me, for medium density. It is right downtown. It's within walking distance of a lot of the amenities. A lot of the values that I've heard from the community are the same values that individuals that are going into, into entry level or renting would hold as well. They want to raise, they want to raise their families. They want, they're younger, they're older. There's a mix. There's a diversity. It's the same for renters as it is for single-family homeowners. I can also appreciate the fact that this is a neighborhood that is well-maintained. Generally, when we see infill applications come to us, we see them in more areas that are on the verge of needing redevelopment, areas that have been neglected for years, sometimes decades, and are in need of redevelopment. So there's a need for it. With regards to looking at the city as a whole, this is a need. We are looking at our official community plan right now in depth, and a 20-year projection is we need to double our population. If we double our population, our population upwards, the city will fail. It's just that simple. We cannot double our population sprawling outwards. Having said that, there is also a lot of value of having young families in affordable, single-family housing within accessibility to the downtown. It's a nice mix to have that option, especially in a neighborhood that is being well-maintained. So there's benefits to both, but with the neighbors coming out, I will be voting against the motion to approve this development.
Go ahead, Counselor Ebert.
Mr. Mayor, I want to address, I mean, first of all, I appreciate everybody that's come out and see both sides as well, but I want to address the topic of transport, of traffic. I live on a street, I live on Park, Parkview Crescent, off of Parkview Crescent, on Parkside Place. We have well over 200 apartments at the end of our street, and traffic is no impact. There is so little traffic coming out of those 200 suites. And so that part, I would say, is not going to be a big issue, especially in that area, with the people working probably nearby. I feel this will not impact that, and I think the, the area where this is proposed, I don't have a problem, and it's tough to see change for anybody and everybody here. And I know you don't like what I'm saying, but I will be voting in favor of this.
Thank you. Anything in closing?
First of all, I'd like to say, I actually really like it when we have split votes, because I think that's democracy in action. So I think that's really good, and I appreciate the comments by my colleagues. Again, regardless of which way this one goes, I do think it is a difficult case, and I think we all can see both, both sides of the coin on this one. Yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Counsel, this is a difficult decision. And you can ask, you can ask administration. I have been on the phone with them a lot, trying to decipher through all the information to make the best decision. And at the end of the day, I do believe, because of where it's situated, because of the nature of the project, because of the, it's beside the hospital, all those things, I, I think it's a good fit for the area. And I want to qualify that, because I, Counselor Swigster, I do agree with you, that we don't want to hear about what's, what's life in Tokyo like, but I get it, that there are people that don't live in the area that have experience, and I think we need to listen to their experience as well. And I'm gonna come from a point of experience now with multifamily. In, I'm gonna try and think, might have been '08, I think it was 2012, we bought a property on Lumber Avenue, and there was two multifamily behind, behind us, two buildings like what Mr. Lee wants to build by you guys. There were two right behind us. And I would say the exact same things about our neighborhood. We would talk to our neighbors. We would help our neighbors. Lori would. During COVID, the neighborhood became so close. Like, every community, I believe every neighborhood in our, in our community has a little micro-community inside of it. And I think that is to be, let me do, that needs to be celebrated. And you can have that beautiful, close community with multifamily in your neighborhood. It's even, it just multiplies it because there's more people. There wasn't an evening that we weren't outside, that people from the multifamily were walking past our, our street, and they, they would talk. I remember talking to my wife many times. I'm not doing yard work in the evening when people are walking, because I get nothing done. So I would hide in the backyard, and I would send her up front to do the yard work in front. But, but that's how it was. And we just, we loved that community. We loved that neighborhood. It was, it was straight out of necessity that we had to move. My wife's knees were failing, and with a small heritage home, there were lots of steep stairs. So we had to do something. We'd still be there if, if, if we could have taken care of that, that issue. But please, don't fear multifamily. You can live harmoniously with multifamily and single-family dwellings. It does work. And that micro-community, I can appreciate it, because we, we loved our people that were beside us. And during one time when our, when our neighbors were having a baby, they had, it was, he was premature, well, we just, they just, we just go. We took care of their yard. I snowblowed their yard. Apparently that, that November, December, it snowed every other day. So I was constantly at their place, snowblowing. We took care of So I was constantly at their place, snowblowing. We took care of them. When our neighbor across the street, she now has passed away, we worked with the family, we helped them. Even to, like, even though we don't live there anymore, we still help them. And, you know, those connections, and the connections you're making in your neighborhood, they're not going to just stay in the neighborhood. They will last for years and years and years. And that, because that's how we are. We're people. We're wired for companionship and friendship. So please, don't look at that this as such a negative. There can be a lot of positive to this, because we saw the positive of living. And we lived with two of the same-sized buildings right behind us. So for that reason, I do believe that, that I think this is a good fit, and I will as well vote in favor. And I will also agree with Counselor Penner. I do actually like it when we don't have unanimous votes. It shows that counsel has deliberated, and counsel is thinking hard and serving the community as best we can. Call for the question. All who are in favor, opposed, that is carried. Thank you.
Is there money in here?
Good job, Susan.
Waldo, I guess you're not going to clap for me, eh? You're not going to clap for me.
Is this going to be that long?
I know.
Thanks, Susan. Good job.
Okay, Counsel, we'll move on to 6B. This is another public hearing. I think what we'll do is we'll take B and C. Mr. Workney, if you could introduce them together, and we'll take care of them separately, but we won't do them separately necessarily. So we'll introduce them together. So this is for B and C. This is conditional use, CU-202401. This refers to 331st Street. And the variance is also the same. It's V-202402. This is also referring to 331st Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just give me a moment. I've just spilled a cup of water over my note.
Well, you take a couple of minutes to, whatever, clean up. I do want to say that the proud new owners of our house on Lumber are sitting right in front of us. Yeah, and we invested significant dollars into it. Okay. That's how transition goes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As requested, I will introduce both files, and then counsel may proceed to consider both matters. Firstly, application for conditional use, file CU-2024-01, and application for variance, file V-2024-02, both affecting 331st Street in Steinbach. Owner of the property is Sky Prom Marketing, Inc. The applicant for the variance and conditional use applications is Waldo Nuestader. Purpose of the conditional use application is to allow a multifamily residential development within the C2 commercial community zone, as pursuant to the city's zoning bylaw. Purpose of the variance application is to remove or to permit a commercial component that is required on the main floor of a multifamily building within the C2 commercial community zone, and to permit the commercial component of that development to be zero. The application, or the applicant is proposing to build a 15-suite residential building on the subject property. Notices, as are required under the Planning Act, have been issued. There is one item of written correspondence that was received for both files, and that is provided in the additional package of information that was provided to counsel in counsel's mail bins earlier this afternoon. With respect to the conditional use application, this particular lot on 1st Street is currently designated Central Business District Transitional Zone in the city's official community plan. And similar applications have previously been considered by counsel with respect to applications in the past. Notably, files CU-2016-02 and file V-2016-01 for 242 and 250 Hanover Street. Counsel resolution was to approve those applications. And also, files CU-2023-07 and file V-2013-28 at 15-90 Brandt Street. Counsel also approved both resolutions for those applications. Recommendation from Administration is that counsel approve both the conditional use application and the variance application, subject to any new information that may be provided at the hearing, and subject to the execution of a development agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Workney. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Close the council meeting. Is the applicant here today? And do you wish to speak? Thank you. Take the podium.
My name is Waldo Nuestader, 101-32 Brandt Street. Before I start, I'd kind of like to talk to Mr. Seams. I'm not sure if I want to talk, start a flower mill, but 10-year tax holiday would be great.
See, look what you started.
I knew that would haunt me.
I'm representing the owner of the project at 331st Street. I appreciate the opportunity to present our development proposal and provide insights into our conditional use and variance application. Realizing the potential of this long vacant property and acknowledging that its current zoning is C2 commercial community zone, we embarked on a journey to secure interest from potential commercial tenants for the main floor. Despite our exhaustive endeavors, it became clear that the peripheral nature of the location in relation to the downtown core posed a challenge in attracting businesses of the desired caliber. Consequently, we undertook a strategic pivot to realign with the downtown core's evolving demands, leading us to unveil the development plan before you today. The development of a 15-door apartment complex ensued after collaboration with the city's development office and engineers, ensuring adherence to all municipal requirements. Through this collaborative effort, we have crafted a final conceptual plan that we are proud to present to you today. Our project meticulously addresses various aspects, including parking requirements, drainage plans, privacy fencing for the neighboring residential properties. We have taken special care to orient balconies and living spaces towards the front and rear of the property, maintaining a distance of 126 feet from the nearest residential house to the back of the building. Additionally, we propose a 25-foot green space buffer to enhance the aesthetic and environmental quality of the surroundings. We firmly believe that our project fulfills a vital community need by enhancing residential density in the downtown core. Its strategic location within walking distance of essential amenities such as businesses, grocery stores, banks, restaurants, coupled with the inclusion of an elevator, creating a user-friendly environment accessible to all residents. Moreover, we envision a scenario where vehicle ownership may become optional with alternative modes of transportation, such as scooters or walking, sufficing for daily commute needs. Considering the neighborhood's existing zoning and the impact on the community, we refrain from canvassing the neighborhood as the existing zoning is divided between C1 and C2, and we're confident that transitioning towards an all-residential use will positively contribute to reducing overall activity in the area, fostering a smooth transition. In conclusion, we believe that our project offers a compelling transitional building option that aligns with the evolving needs of our community. We're excited about the prospect of bringing this vision to life and contributing to the continued growth and vibrancy of our downtown area.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel, we're looking at the conditional use at this time. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you for your presentation, and we'll call you back if we need you. Thank you. Is there anyone here that has comments, questions, or objections for this conditional use?
Hi, I'm Reagan Bradley from 333 Second Street. I'm immediately behind the proposed property. And I might have misheard or just skipped my ear, but I'm concerned about privacy. Again, this is another three-story building. I'm expecting my first child in May, and so I face concern of people looking in. I already have begun to feel some wariness with some of the lower upkeep on a number of the rental areas in the surrounding couple blocks radius and the renters that inhabit them. There's been, like, increasing thefts and some vandalism. I've had a number of things stolen off my deck. I've had things broken on my deck on my front patio. And the increasing traffic at night concerns me. I know Waldo has a large degree of experience in building homes, but I've been witness to a number of the homes as I'm in construction, doing repairs on even some of the newer multifamily units, where there has been water damage, poorly, poor insulation, a lot of things causing humidity and mold, harming the inhabitants, and, like, decreasing the value of the property itself. And I would be concerned that that could happen again.
Okay, is there anyone else with comments, questions, or objections? Okay, go ahead.
Hey, I just want to say thank you for posting these things on.
Your name and.
Yes, my name's Scott Jodwin, and what else do you need to know? This is new to me.
Address.
408 Southwood Drive. I previously lived on 428 Hanover Drive, Hanover Street, and it was amazing. I loved it there. I just want to say a quick thank you for posting this live online. I was getting my kids down. I was able to watch quickly and catch up what was going on here. I'm going to go against a lot of what these other local Hanover Street and other downtown people are saying, and I love this initiative to have more multifamily dwellings. I'd say that having lived on Hanover Street, the primary thing I was thinking of when I chose to come back to Steinbach instead of leave for somewhere else or stick in Winnipeg was the walkability, was the affordability. In my mind, I wanted to start a family in Steinbach, and the thing that caught my attention was, can I see a financially effective way to start a family in a place and have a place for those kids to play? And a single-family unit was great, but on the other hand, this kind of place would have been appealing to me, too, under a few conditions. One, I would have to own it. That makes a massive difference. And when I see something like this, I see it as like, are we, well, this is a vacant lot, so I won't get into it here, but I do want to know what, like, is this going to be, this is all purely rentals. Is that right?
That's what I believe the intent is. The intent is for rentals, yeah.
Right. I see that as a lost opportunity, because I would never consider a rental, ever. But I love the initiative to bring more people into this walkable space that I loved so much. I want to share that with people. I want more people to come and own that with us. I grew, outgrew the size of our home, and I would have seen a place like this as perfectly acceptable to start our starter home, starter condo, starter property. And now we've moved out, we've outgrown it. But these 50s lots, like the one that I had on 428 Hanover Street, was just, we, like, I was scratching my head. Why is this huge lot here? I enjoyed it, but honestly, it was more than what we needed. Just want to encourage this initiative. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for your opinion and your support. Anyone else with comments, questions, or objections to this file?
My name is Emily Bell. I live at 198 Lumber Avenue with my husband. We're against the building of this apartment. We moved into our home a year and a half ago and fell in love with our home property and neighborhood because of the quiet street, large backyard. One of the first things our neighbors said to us was how quiet and peaceful our neighborhood is. Building this apartment is going to take all those things away from us. The proposed building is going to be directly to the back of our yard. We are people that enjoy being in our backyard, having our family and our friends over, playing yard games, having bonfires in the evening. We are concerned about the noise and traffic that is going to come with this building. The streets are very small. When we're backing out of our driveway, if our neighbor is parked on the street, we have to be careful to not hit their vehicle as it's a very narrow street. We will be losing all privacy in our yard, as well as our home. A three-story building is going to be able to see directly into our backyard, as well as the windows in our house at the back of our property. We do not have children yet, but with the idea of this building being built, it is a bit concerning for us with how close the apartment is going to be to our home. We are concerned for the safety, privacy, and well-being of our neighborhood. We have concerns about the parking lot, not only the noise it may bring, but the light that will be lit up all night in the parking lot, as well as the garbage. With a 15-family unit being there, with how much extra garbage we bring, as well as the smell, and if any of the garbage is to blow into our yard or come over the fence that is supposed to be built, we have to clean it up. We cannot imagine how much noise and mess the development of this apartment is going to bring. This quiet neighborhood will not benefit from this apartment being built. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone else with comments, questions, or objections? The applicant wishes to speak again? Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm not sure who can see which plot. I'll use this here. This is where we are, and so there's a vacant lot right beside the proposed building. The proposed building will be approximately in this area here. Then there's a vacant lot right beside it on the other side. There's two residences here, and then one right directly behind. The distance from this building here to here is 126 feet. The linear vision, like, the balconies are going to be facing either to the front, to the street, or to the back. The side, the side yards here, these two affected residences, will be bedroom windows only, which should make a difference for the linear, bedroom windows usually four and a half feet or so up from floor level, so people don't generally stand on their bedroom windows and, you know, stare out at the neighborhood and so on. And we'll also be putting a privacy fencing from this point till here, and then right across the back.
Okay.
Just a point, just to, if that.
And any trees in the back that are now buffer?
There will be new trees planted in the back, because right in the back, there's not really, there's a hydro pole in the way and stuff there. There's not a lot of trees on this particular property, but there will be trees planted in the back, and also there's a drainage. The lot is going to be drained back to front, and there's going to be a berm and drainage coming off of the back to the front, so that we don't, so that we will not be draining into any of the neighbors' properties.
But you've limited the, you've maintained privacy by limiting where the windows are?
That's correct. It's to the front and to the back, and not to the side. Yeah.
Okay. No, I think that does answer some of the questions. Thank you. Okay, I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, seeing none, I will close. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed on the conditional use? Counsel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Counsel Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start by addressing the obvious thing that some might be wondering who've been watching all the hearings. What's the difference between this one and the previous one? Two key things. First of all, this property is zoned C2, commercial community zone. It is not a single-family property, so there is no chance of a single-family home being built there. It is C2 commercial, which means that residential can go there on a conditional use basis, and that's what we evaluate here. If this was not approved, the applicant could. If there was a business that wanted to go there, you could have a business of equal size that could go right in that property. And in terms of impact and size and noise and all that, you would have at least the same impact if you have a commercial property of the same size. And it's currently zoned for that right now. So the only question is, would we allow residential there instead of commercial? And I don't see a problem with that based on the information I've heard. Secondly, this is located in our central business transitional zone, which means that it is officially designated as such, that this is our central business area transitional, which is intended for these types of developments as part of the development of the downtown. So the area is within the transitional zone, and it's already zoned for something which does allow for this type of structure. The only question is whether residential can go here, and I think the applicant has put forward a reasonable plan that fits.
Thank you. Anything further, Counsel Penner?
Counsel's request recovered at all?
Anything further from counsel? Anything in closing? I got nothing left to say. I'm going to just call for the question. All's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Okay, counsel, now I will reopen the public hearing, close the council meeting. We will deal with variance V 2024-2. This is referring to 331 First Street. The applicant has already spoken. Mr. Nustater, were you wanting to speak to the variance as well? The variance has to do with the lack of... Yeah, okay. So just so what we're dealing with now is, because there's a commercial component to the property, the variance will allow for no commercial on the main floor. So that's what we're dealing with now. That'll just be all residential. Okay, so is there... Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to the variance? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to the variance? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Hebert?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counsel Siemens. Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we have here is an application from a developer that wishes to build a 15-unit building, three stories, in an area that's transitional, part of our OCP plan that should have a commercial component to it. As we've heard from the developer, he has done inquiries in the area and from business people in town regarding getting commercial people into the main, or the bottom floor of that building, and has come up empty. And when I look at transitional zone, I'm looking at, is this transitional if we have... We come from an area of residential, we're going into the commercial, and we start off the first building, doesn't have a commercial, but it has a residential component to it. And then maybe the next building or two to it would in fact have a commercial component to it. We've heard that there's an empty lot on either side, and from my point of view, I don't see anything negative about the plan. We've had a final conceptual plan presented. It seems very plausible and seems quality, it seems good. And we've also heard, you know, I'm just going back to the last variance, we heard people concerned about the buffer zones or the proximity to the building. In fact, as Counselor Schweitzer said earlier, without the commercial component to it, there'll be less traffic in the area, there'll be less noise. So I think this is a good building to start our transitional area in that area there on Second Street or on First Street. I think it's a good plan.
Thank you. Anything further?
Very briefly, this is part of our central business district, and it is a commercial property, and we've always maintained our official community plan. We would like commercial on the bottom floor with residential on top, but the request here is to put residential throughout, and I think it makes sense in this case to have all residential, so I approve.
Thank you very much. Anything further, counsel?
Nothing further.
Nothing in closing? Call for the question. All's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Thank you. Okay, counsel, we'll move to number eight, reports and recommendations of city manager. This is 8A, 2024 Capital Works Tender Award. Mr. Workney, could you please introduce his file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city recently released a tender, a tender call for its proposed 2024 Capital Works program. That includes infrastructure projects made up of upgrades and work on Hanover Street, Penner Street, and Brant Street in Steinbach. The tender for this program closed on February 22, 2024, with four bids received. Recommendation from the project engineer, AECom Canada LTD, is to award the bid to the low bidder, being Maple Leaf Construction, for the amount of $1,324,707 plus applicable taxes. This amount is within the anticipated budget that has been set by the city for 2024. Recommendation from administration is for counsel to approve the award.
Thank you, Mr. Workney. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Penner?
Motion to accept the bid as presented from administration.
Do we have seconder? Counsel Hebert? Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Every spring, the city packages together some capital works projects into a program that we can then send out to tender to get more competitive bids. And it's the low bid of $1.324 million for Maple Leaf Construction is below the consultant's estimate, is also considerably below the city's estimate, and it's nice to see that all four bids came in underneath the city's estimated budget. So hopefully, that's a sign of construction stabilizing and maybe getting a little more affordable in the future. So it's good to see that, and I'm very happy to award it over to them.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Counselor Penner has pretty well stated everything I was going to say as well, so well done.
Great. Anything further, counsel? Victory. Anything further in closing?
Well, did well done, so...
Okay. Call for the question. All's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. We've got 8B. This is for Lowen Boulevard, the Tender Award. The information was to follow. It's in the package that we received in your mailbox when we were waiting for you when you got back, came to City Hall. It starts on page nine in that supplementary package. Mr. Workney, could you please introduce his file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Another Tender Award. This is for the 2024 Lowen Boulevard Force Main Project. This tender closed on February 27, 2024, with only one bid having been received. The bid received amounted to $570,310 plus applicable taxes, which exceeded the budgeted funding available for the project. Administration investigation was twofold. Firstly, due to the fact that it was a sole bidder, the administration did review with its project consultant as to the reasonable value for the dollar that could be expected for the project. We, in conjunction with review with our engineers, determined that it was a reasonable bid as far as pricing. And secondly, due to the bid exceeding the proposed budget, administration has negotiated a reduced scope of work, which resulted in a reduced contract amount with the bidder. Ultimately, the recommendation from the city's project consultant, Associated Engineering, is to award the contract for the reduced scope of work to Accurate HD for $491,693 plus applicable taxes. When combined with the estimated project consulting that is also required for the project, this project will slightly exceed the budgeted funding that was previously allotted. Further to this recommendation to award the tender, the administration had also, has also looked into where the possible available funds could be sourced, and due to the cost savings that are going to be realized from the 2024 Capital Works Tender, there will be budget funding available to be able to be reallocated to this project, and therefore recommendation is to award this project to Accurate HD for $491,693.
Thank you, Mr. Workney. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Schweitzer?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counsel Siemens. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city manager explained, this is for the Lowen Boulevard Force Main Installation Project. While the initial tender did come in over budget, I appreciate the effort of administration to reduce the scope slightly to bring it closer to our budget, and it's obviously important work that has to go ahead, and so I'm in favor of awarding the tender.
Thank you. Anything further?
This is a critical project to move forward. As, once this is complete, next year, we will rip apart Lowen Boulevard and Number 12. But in order to do that, we have to do this first, and this also complements the building that is happening, potentially happening, the subdivisions that are going in on the east end of Steinbach off of Lowen Boulevard and Old Town.
Right. Anything further, counsel? Anything in closing? Call for the question. All's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Going to 9A, this is administration. Accounts payable, back of the book. We've all had a chance to review. Looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Hebert, seconded by Counsel Penner. Any comments?
No comments.
For the question, all's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. We've got 9B. We've got building permits on page 58, building permits for February 2024. Looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Penner, seconded by Counsel Hebert. Go ahead, Counsel Penner.
It's a bit of a slower month. We've had an embarrassment of britches in the past year, so this is a little lower than we've been used to, but things are still rolling and going strong in Steinbach.
All right. Anything further of counsel? Closing? Yes, counsel, it was a... It's not the month we're used to. We've been used to big numbers every month for the last little over a year, but you know what? It's still strong for the year. We're still, like, overall, we're doing well, and we are expecting, we're expecting some projects to come through in the next little while. Call for the question. All's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. We've got 9C. We've got business license, the resident and non-resident, on page 59. Looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Siemens, seconded by Counsel Hebert. Any comments?
That businesses are taking out licenses.
Yeah. Okay. Call for the question. All's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Are there any questions of counsel tonight? Okay, seeing none. There are no correspondence petitions. We do have other business. We have the Jacob Library Board. We have another board member to appoint, and that will be Carolyn Graham. She is our past librarian, so just need a motion to ratify. Counsel Penner, seconded by Counsel Hebert. Okay, call for the question, or do you have any comments?
Yes, in fact, I was on the library board when Carolyn was librarian, and she was just, she just did an outstanding job, so I think that is a real... That's excellent that we could get her to come sit on the board. She'll have lots of advice and insight, so that's great.
I'll add the same. I've heard only positive things about Mrs. Graham, so looking forward to that.
Yes, counsel, something I've started doing now with the library appointments, I have meetings with those I'm thinking of appointing, and I did have a meeting with Carolyn. Got to know her really well. I think she'll do a fantastic job. Call for the question. All's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Point to Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Item 9D on the agenda.
Oh, sorry. I should have said, item 9D is postponed. Sorry. Yeah. That was my fault. Okay, so motion to adjourn? Counsel Penner, seconded by Counsel Hebert. Don't make me cough, I got a cold. Call for the question. All's in favor. Oppose, that's carried. Next regular council meeting is Tuesday, April 2, 2024, at 7:30. Not quite our longest...